All right, a call to order. City of Whittier, Alaska, regular city council meeting, June 20th, 2023. The time is now 7:08 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
I'm going to call roll on the telephone first, or I'm going to take everybody off mute. Shen. Wagner.
Here.
Arnison.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Denmark.
Here.
Penkush.
I'm here.
Mayor Dixon.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Citizen comments on any agenda item except those items scheduled for public hearing. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak on any agenda item except those scheduled for public hearing. Time is officially noted to two minutes per speaker, thirty minutes total time for this agenda item. I will allow some extra time if it seems necessary. We'll wait to find out who's signed in.
I didn't see a signed in sheet when I came in.
Oh, you didn't?
Could you put my name on that check?
I will. Mayor, the first signed in is Jamie Loane.
All right, Jamie Loane, come to the podium.
Thank you, Persian, to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to really quickly bring attention to two matters, mostly, I feel, dealing with parks and rec. Number one, we are having a Solstice event tomorrow at seven. Cookout, fire, music, and we are doing the Whittier Wish Wash, which is going to be a cardboard boat regatta. So that'll be super exciting, even if you're not racing a park or a boat, come up and watch other people's sink. But also, I wanted to bring up an issue with maybe getting perhaps some more porta potties around trailheads around town. I don't know if anybody has gone to the Emerald Cove Trailhead, but there are already several people camping out there right now, and they have been the last few days. And it doesn't take very long, especially with no bathrooms out there, for it to be to be used as a bathroom. And we're seeing more and more activity in Whittier. So I would just like to put that out there. I don't like to see it. It's bad for the environment. I'm sure no one wants to see that. So a discussion about adding porta potties would be awesome.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Next person.
Mayor Peter Denmark.
Peter, you're up next.
Thank you. I won't need that two minutes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to offer from the side of the table, because this has to do with my business, but six months ago, I offered a correspondence to the City of Whittier. A month and a half ago, I did the same thing on two separate matters. I have never received a response from either. We have had some conversation, but if a business owner or an individual were to forward a correspondence to the city, I believe that some response is due, even if it's go away. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. All right, anybody else that would like to speak that hasn't signed up may now come to the podium, show your hand, say none. Next item is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Approval of the Consent Agenda, pass of all routine items by asterisk. Consent Agenda items are not considered separately unless a council member requests. In the event of such a request, the item is returned to the regular Agenda. Also, I'd like to mention that I'd like to move item 8C to the end, basically under nine council comments, I guess we could call it nine A. Got your motion?
Move.
Peter and Tom. Any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.
Calling for a vote on the approval of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda, Denmark?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Arnison?
He may have lost.
I told him you need to call back in. Penkush? Just checking to see if you guys are still online. Is there anyone on this line?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Councilmember Penkush, are you there? Councilmember Penkush, are you there? Councilmember Arnison, are you there? We have an open line, I don't. So I will state that Mr. Penkush has dropped the line, and so has Mr. Arnison. Oh, Mr. Penkush, you're there?
Yeah, I'm here, but the line's dropping, or some reason.
Okay, so I'm-
We're getting, we're getting, we're getting, it's like a, it's a constant beep, a double beep, and it, but I keep calling back, and it calls back in, but I don't know what it is.
So I'm asking for a vote for the approval of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda. How do you vote?
Yeah.
And Mr. Arnison, are you there? Not hearing from Mr. Arnison, I'm putting that the phone dropped at 7:15 for him, but your approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda has been approved. On the Agenda tonight, for approval, is the May 9th regular meeting minutes. Moving on to item six.
Ask you for your code.
Mr. Arnison, are you there?
Yeah, finally, I don't know, something cut me off again, that I'm in and out, and it's beeping and doing all kinds of crazy things, so I don't know.
Okay, if you'll just be real quiet, we'll keep it as this, the way that it is, and hopefully we don't drop anybody else. I'm putting you back on. Mr. Arnison, how do you vote for the approval of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda?
And what?
Do you approve of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to presentations and reports, we have Ms. Kristin Carpenter from PWS, and she has a presentation that I am going to put up on the screen. Let's hope that I do.
Great, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
You are real weak. Okay, so this is Kristin Carpenter with the Prince William Sound Economic Development District. We cover the Prince William Sound region, so the communities that we work with are Whittier, Chiniga, Titlic, Valdez, and Cordova. And as part of that work, we've been looking at the feasibility of a ferry authority for specifically, a regional ferry authority just for Prince William Sound, similar to a model that's been implemented down in southeast, where they have the inter-island ferry authority that runs between Hollis and Ketchikan. And I've got Rebecca Braun with the McKinley Research Group is also here with us. She has led this project to look at the feasibility of a ferry authority just for Prince William Sound, and she'll talk about the why behind it, but I think I'll just take a minute to say, probably, we all recognize what's been happening with ferry service over the last decade, maybe a little bit more, in terms of, the service has been a lot less regular, a lot less consistent, and we're concerned about what that could mean for our remote communities, and so we've been looking into, is this something that, as a region, we could conceivably support? So I will turn it over to Becca and let her walk through a slideshow for us. Thank you.
Hi, this is Rebecca Braun, and I hope you can hear me. It's a little tricky, I'm using the phone line.
We can hear you well.
Okay, great, thanks. Let's see, if we could just go there, perfect. And you can see my slides, I take it?
Yes.
Okay, good, I can see Kristin there giving me some, thanks. Um, well, so my name's Rebecca Braun, I'm with McKinley Research Group, in Juneau, and nice to be here tonight with you all. So as Kristin mentioned, the purpose of this study was to assess the viability of regional ferry authority in Prince William, to provide reliable and sustainable ferry service that meets the needs of the region. And we're all familiar, I think, with the context, declining state support for the Alaska Marine Highway System, and increasing service disruption for a variety of reasons. Go to next slide. Can you guys advance the slide, or?
I'm trying.
Okay.
Just moving slow. You can go ahead and continue with the scope of work.
Let me get, okay, cool. Let me get back in my own slides to where I need to be. Hold on a sec, Kristin's off me, yes, my restream is muted, so a little, sorry, everybody, it's challenging to hear me. Our scope of work, I'm just going to be really brief about this, where we analyzed historic marine highway system revenue, we looked at operating costs, a little bit of look at what it would cost to build a vessel, we did some analysis of revenues, and cash flow and risk, and some public engagement, including meetings like this one. We can move forward. Okay, I'm not sure if you see it or not, but the study area, I won't set, I know you all are very familiar with this area, but the five Prince William Sound, Alaska Marine Highway Ports are Whittier, Valdez, Titlic, Cordova, Chiniga Bay. The longest route is Cordova-Whittier, also one of the most significant routes, at about ninety knots miles. I'm moving to the next slide, just a little look at population in your region, uh, seven thousand people in the region, with slight growth over the last decade, and the Department of Labor is projecting, over the next twenty years, a very slight decline. The belief that they project that decline will be primarily in Chiniga Bay and Titlic, which have lost, and as you can see, over the last decade. Moving on, route duration, the longest, the longest duration is a little over fifteen hours for a rest trip from the Cordova, and that assumes a deficit of about fifteen knots, and a sixty-minute turn time, sort of standard Alaska Marine Highway boats for the region. This is noteworthy because US Coast Guard regulations that would apply limit six route twelve hours, the Whittier-Cordova trip, and the Whittier-Valdez trip, very close, and probably squeeze in, the other routes can be done, or around, been undertold. Looking at Prince William Sound ferry traffic history, from 2011 to 2021, for 2022, data is available, yes, not, when we discuss, there's a revealed downward trend, as you can see, with a little bit of a bump, that's a sharp drop in 2020, but basically, traffic, along with it, revenue, falling, really enhanced. And while some say that's dropping demand, there are also, there were, there have been reductions in service over that period. Moving on, this monthly Prince William Sound parking passengers and vehicles, this from 2018, that's the last year for which we, we were able to get the breakdown of monthly data, and it shows, I think, what we're all pretty familiar with, a pretty strong seasonal for, with July and August, being the biggest month for total passenger and total traffic. Looking at revenue, this is slide nine, and I apologize that it's a wall of numbers. So the message here, as you can see, 2011, we had over five million in revenue associated with Prince William Sound routes, Alaska Marine Highway, which fell to 2.3 million in 2020. So that, that tracks rider depth, and it's a major, major hit. So ferry authority, we've talked a little bit about how this is, looking at a ferry authority, and want to talk briefly about what a ferry authority is. Moving on to slide 11, Alaska has a statute, the Alaska Municipal Port Authority Act, that enables municipal governments, either on its own or in coordination with other municipalities, to create a port authority, ferry authority, by passing an ordinance. And if multiple government, local governments are involved, they have to pass equivalent or parallel ordinances. The authority becomes a political subdivision of the municipality or municipalities, once that ordinance and voter approval is gained. And there are a bunch of provisions, governed by a board of directors, authorities have the power to borrow money, issue bonds, they have the power of eminent domain, they have access to public funds, they are subject to open, the Open Meetings Act, and their development plan has to be approved by all participating municipalities. They also are tax exempt. Moving on to slide 11, this is just a quick summary of some advantages and challenges that might be associated with a ferry authority. So in terms of advantages, probably the biggest advantage for Prince William Sound is that, at least theoretically, it can be expected to be a little closer to local needs, just as local government, generally, is more responsive to local needs. And this may also, being smaller, more full, where there may be some operational and management flexibilities that allow for greater innovation, the Alaska Marine Highway System is positioned to really pursue. There's shared responsibility across municipalities, through the law, they're also shielded liability, and as mentioned, eligible for public funding and tax exempt. And we have, as Kristin mentioned, inter-island ferry authority, so there is a model in the state which we can learn from. In terms of challenges, there, there would be an enormous investment of resources, time, energy, money, to get this going. And another one that, that may be a limitation is that only municipalities are applicable under the current statute, so if tribes, for example, wanted to be partners, I believe there would need to be statutory change. Ongoing, it would take time and political effort to maintain alignment among the partners, and there would be uncertainty about state and federal aid, and this is sort of a risk calculation, because, of course, there's currently uncertainty, particularly state aid, associated with the Alaska Marine Highway System. And a last one is that pulling Prince William Sound out of the Marine Highway System would potentially weaken the Marine Highway System itself. I don't think there's a, does that do that for lots of reasons, of course, it would still be part of the system, we would assume, would want to be, in terms of cross Gulf ferry, and getting to Kodiak, for example, so a strong Marine Highway System would still be in the interest of the region. Moving on to slide 12, and interrupt me if, if you need to, please. This is just a few little samples of potential opportunities for innovation, and these largely came from interviews we did. We interviewed about twenty-five people in the region, and here were some ideas, mainly, that they had. In terms of partnership, there's potential, especially in the winter, for backhaul of waste and refuel, especially maybe out of the communities, small communities that are not roded, and freight delivery, there could be efficiencies there. In terms of partnerships around transportation, particularly Whittier to Anchorage, this came up a lot, that that's a sort of unmet need at this time. Operational improvements, I think these, you know, people have been saying this heated for a long time, but maybe ferries, schedules could be established with longer lead time, especially for tourism, but locals as well, that would be super helpful, maybe more flexibility in exploration policies, innovation in those policies, and promotions, a lot of people said they, they think promotions drive a rep, free, or could drop back. And similarly, maintenance improvements, hopefully there could be more proactive planning for scheduling and scheduled maintenance, and just a more holistic, long-term infrastructure planning than we get with the Marine Highway System, which potentially every four years under a new governor seems to change direction. So you might ideally have more management stability for a ferry authority. Moving on, service models, we looked at, basically a single day boat and a two-day boat fleet, were two of the models we looked at closely. And the single-day boat would provide basic service, would not have backup service. Two-day boat fleet, of course, would have a little more capacity, stability, and then slide goes into this, a bit more. So a single, this is thinking about a single large day boat, we estimated annual operating costs, excludes administration, overhead, and, and maintenance, at about $7.6 million. And this would be the least expensive to operate, also, you'd have the lowest, you know, you just need one vessel, so acquiring a vessel would arguably be easier. In terms of disadvantages, you may not quite meet peak demand, or you not have regular backups for maintenance and service disruption. The two-day boat fleet, with a large and a small one is what we modeled, interestingly, costs came out not significantly higher than a large day boat. You'd have the better ability to meet peak demand, and more flexibility with a large and a small boat, to sort of efficiently meet the change in demand levels over the year. You'd have backup service, and most likely generate more revenue. But it would be a little more expensive to operate, and certainly much more expensive to obtain vessels. A twenty-four-hour boat, say, like Aurora, our estimate came out significantly higher at over fifteen million annual operating costs, and the principal advantage would be that you can operate beyond that twelve-hour day, so it gives you a lot more scheduling flexibility, where we've got that, that fifteen-hour Whittier-Cordova trip, it would be able to handle that. Of course, it's, it's the most expensive to operate, and again, we would regular backup. Moving on to slide 16, just briefly, vessel acquisition, we estimated construction at close to $100 million. There are lots of unknowns about that, and of course, there are potentially various federal funds. There might be the opportunity to use an Alaska Marine Highway System vessel. The Aurora, the La Conti are fifty old, so, you know, it would likely require a lot of maintenance and no doubt replacement, so those are not the best, uh, attractive options. Slide 17, in terms of funding, I should, I should say, back up a little bit and say, we really don't expect that, under even the most optimistic scenario, revenues would cover costs on an annual operating basis for this system, and we believe that's appropriate, because this would be providing a public service as a public purpose. But it's important to understand that there's risk involved in that, and with, with really good management, smart decision-making, innovation and flexibility, we can expect to reduce the gap between revenues and costs, but it really, it really wouldn't be realistic to expect to provide the service that communities want and need, and be able to cover the costs. So that brings us to potential fund sources. There are various federal funds, such as formula grants for rural areas, there are some special funds, and there are competitive grants. The ISA receives ongoing federal funding each year, and it's likely that this ferry authority would be able to fall to top into annual vessel operating funds. Most likely, it would expose the gap entirely, so state aid could be sought, and assuming that the general fund support needed would be less than or equal to whatever savings there were to the Alaska Marine Highway System, you could make the case, you know, to the state that it makes sense. However, you never know what legislators are going to think, and they might just say, great, we can cut Prince William Sound loose, they've got their own ferry authority. So there's a lot of uncertainty and potential volatility, you might get money one year, but it won't be until you get money the next. You know, there may be ways of entering into a contract with the state, or trying to come up with multi-year agreements to state, to provide certainty, but it, it hasn't really been done before in this context. Other sources might be local aid, or private partnerships, tribal partnerships, they're going to really take strong relationships and collaborate, potentially legal changes. Moving on, we're almost done, I'm just going to, potential pathway to a ferry authority, depending on if you need to build a vessel, which is really going to be the, the most time-consuming thing to design and find the funding for, it could be a decade-long project. And that is the end of what I've prepared, of questions, I would be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you for your presentation. A tangential question here, there have been a couple attempts over the years to create the Prince William Sound borough, and does the ferry, the ferry authority might benefit from such an action?
Wow, that's a really interesting question, that I have to say, I'm not, I don't think I'm prepared to answer. Kristin, maybe?
My sense is that even, even if there were a borough, that you would still set up a separate entity, because the whole idea of a ferry authority, like Valdez set up a gas line authority, because it would protect other, it would protect the municipality and other entities from the gas line operations and liability? So my sense is that, my sense is that you would do the same thing for this, that even if there were a borough, you would still set up a ferry authority?
Thank you.
Operate this entity? But that's a great question. But that's a great question.
Yeah, it is. Any other council members have questions? No, it was a very good presentation, giving a pretty strong case. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thanks very much for your time and for working with us on the technology.
Thanks. All right, so city clerk has asked for a five-minute break, so we can work on some technical difficulties and sound problems that we're having.
So those on the telephone, I'm going to mute you for this five-minute break. So I'm going to unmute you guys, or you're unmuted now, but if you can stay muted until vote or discussion, we're coming out of recess now.
I'm going to ask the council members to return to the podium, to the dais here. Okay, that was a good presentation. Jim, could you maybe clarify a couple things? How that Prince William Sound ferry authority would operate here? It would not be supplemental to the existing Alaska Marine Highway System here? It would, it would replace it just here in Prince William Sound?
This would be a Prince William Sound Authority, an autonomous entity from the Alaska Marine Highway System, but it would just be in our region for our villages and communities. And I might add that the first Alaska-class ferry that's coming out, it'll be replacing the Testamina, is going to be coming first, and with the others following, just as an observation from five miles up, if we were going to be considering this, why would we not let the Alaska Marine Highway System build all the ferries and then enter into negotiation for used equipment? Quote-unquote, used equipment?
Yeah.
Just thinking out loud.
Yeah. Where's this stemming from?
You know, where's the study stemming from? Like, what are they looking to, is the state looking to offload?
Yeah, it can't continue the way it's going right now.
No, no, they're far beyond their useful life, all of them.
Okay, next item on the agenda, mayor's report. The schedule for upcoming meetings is on page 147. I want to thank the assistant city manager and city clerk for putting that on there. I think that's great. Something to note is that we have work sessions scheduled for next week, Monday, June 26th, work session for council on the PT BT. And Tuesday, the next day, Tuesday, 27th, another work session on consumer sales tax. Is that correct, Jackie? Those dates are still valid?
Yes, those dates are still valid, mayor.
There was a get registered to vote event in the homeowners lounge on May 31st. Maybe, I didn't see anything in the packet, but maybe you can give us a rundown on that? How'd that go?
Our city clerk hosted the first of these events in hopes to help educate and help individuals register to vote, and unfortunately, we had no one in attendance.
Oh, no. Diana Pratt has completed 13 years with the city, started in 2010. I think she started her service as a commission secretary, and just wanted to congratulate her on 13 years of service with the city here. The surplus equipment, the vehicle and vessel sale is going, ongoing right now. I believe it closes next month, July 17th. Is that correct? Okay, great. Have we seen any action, or is it too soon to tell on that? Understood, okay. All right, the last thing is, our next city council meeting is the following day, on July 18th. City manager, do you have anything that you want to add to your report?
I have some anticipated news. Mr. Richard Valentine has accepted the fire chief position. He will be starting June 26th. We've received eight applications. It's a mix for seasonal and for the deputy position, and we'll be moving forward with those as quickly as possible.
Yeah, that is exciting. I, it's been causing a lot of angst. I'm glad that we finally got that taken care of, and I think that's going to be a great addition to our community here, having a fire chief, so that's good news.
If I might add, exceptionally qualified candidates applying for the other positions.
Perfect. That's good to hear. The directors' reports are all located inside the packet. I think one thing I wanted to ask the harbor master, I had heard that maybe some of the harbor bathrooms were closed. I don't know if that was just for cleaning, but I just wanted to make sure that they're
Thank you. So we've got the center restrooms are causing us some problems with the drainage, and Scott and I and the crew have been working on trying to clear that. We don't, we're not sure what's going on, but they keep backing up. So out of concern for safety, public health, that sort of thing, we've got them secured until we can get a camera down there and check it out.
Good deal. All right. Thanks, Dave. Peter, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did have one more thing for my report, if you're looking for reports.
Yeah.
As part of our CIP improvement, I had an electrician come in and do some wiring in our building, and you know the old saying, when you open that, peel that onion, you start finding more issues. He climbed up in the attic space to run some conduit and found a myriad of wiring outside of junction boxes and so forth, wire nuts, electrical tape. So those are definitely issues, safety-wise, that we will be addressing soon, and we'll probably be looking for some more money.
Good deal. All right. Thanks, Dave. Peter, I was looking at my notes, and I skipped over you accidentally. Do you have anything for a vice manager's report?
You're lucky I do not.
Yeah, okay. All right, sorry about that. And then other directors, anything that you have that didn't make it in the packet? Yes, Jackie, go ahead.
I'll just add one informational item. Public Works Director did order additional porta-potties for Emerald Cove Trail, the Horse Tail Park, and Smithy's Cove, so those have been ordered and taken care of as of today.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead, Andre.
Just two items that wasn't added to the public safety packet, both have to do with the tsunami warning system. Last week and a half ago, we did a maintenance update check on our current tsunami equipment. We found out what the issue was, a bad, a little bit of bad wiring with our radio equipment that's hooked up to it. That was corrected, and tomorrow, the tsunami contractors for the State of Alaska will be in Whittier. We're looking at the second tsunami site installation by the head of the bay, so we'll be with them tomorrow. All the equipment for that second tsunami site is physically here in Whittier, is just now is the location and installation of that equipment. Thank you.
Okay, real good.
Question, Mr. Mayor of MA?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I guess I would close this to the city managers, because we don't have individual department reports. Over the last two months, I am aware of two emergency 911 medical calls that went unanswered, and a number of people in town are concerned about this, especially some of the people with gray hair. Neither of these were cruise ship days. This is an essential service, and wondering if there were more instances of this, and what can be done to rectify it?
Yeah, I'll let Andre go ahead and address that.
Currently, until the fire chief comes on board, we have one full-time employee, that's an EMS-qualified EMT three. He currently works four days a week, basically a 24-hour coverage for four days a week. In the downtimes, when he's not here, we try to rely on our volunteers. Sometimes volunteers don't answer, and we have utilized, with the permission of our medical director, ETTs to do transports and patient exchange outside the other side of the valley. There have been times, even though 911 comes in requesting ambulances, that our EMT that's on duty, even though he may not be here because he's on his days off, he still fields that call, contacts appropriate authorities. The police officers have transported out. There has been instances where police officers have gone over to emergency calls, with all our officers are in equipment, we have AEDs in the vehicle, and we do what we can. Other than that, we transport to the other side of the tunnel. And some days are cruise ship days, some days are not cruise ship days. What we're looking forward to is, on Monday, we will actually have two full-time EMS personnel, one's going to be the fire chief, that's an EMT three as well, which is advanced life support, as well as Jeff, which is also advanced life support. With that, I am guessing, they could have that coverage, 24-hour coverage, seven days a week. In interim right now, Girdwood, and basically Girdwood is supervised by the municipality of Anchorage, will not come to Whittier unless we basically declare an emergency disaster. So what we do on those type of transports is we transport them to the other side tunnel, and then we do a patient exchange. In fact, last week, we did have EMS here, but we had a serious medical condition in Whittier that we did a medical transport to the other side, and lifeflight does come out. And then there have been areas where we've requested lifeflight, but the patient, because of their insurance, will not pay for lifeflight, so we've had to transfer critical patients by surface ambulance to Anchorage. I believe it was less than two weeks ago, we had four medical transports in one day, and you're looking at each medical transport, three-hour turnaround roughly. So we try the best we can, when we can do patient transfers to Girdwood Fire or Anchorage Fire, we do that. They bill us accordingly when we do that. But generally, we try our best, and like I said, starting Monday, we'll have two EMS personnel here, and I've already talked to Chief Valentine, and he will probably be addressing the staffing issue as well as the scheduling aspects.
Have there been any more non-responses than the two that I may be aware of?
I'm not sure which ones you're aware of. I know I've been told about some, that there have been, that there was no EMS in town, and some there was a lack of communication on our side. The individuals asked for a escort through the tunnel after hours, and the dispatcher thought they wanted an ambulance, so, and it wasn't a critical need, that was one. That was, that particular issue has been taken care of. But other ones, I know they've called up and we haven't, and then they've said they would transport themselves. But we've offered our services to, at least, that's my knowledge, at least get them to the other side of the tunnel. And generally, even if the EMT, our staff is not here, he still fields the call, because the current protocol is, if we have a 911 or any type of medical call, EMS staff is here, they get fielded the call. If they're not here, he, we still call him, and he basically looks at the call, see what type of assistance is needed, either contact one of the police officers to do a transport, or goes down the phone list, try to get a volunteer, or even call lifeflight if we have to.
So it sounds like we'll be prepared for cruise ship season, where there are numerous calls, but when we are in the off-season, this is a critical service for this town, and a non-response is a significant deficiency. And I guess I would reckon, if that's going to be the way of it in the wintertime, everybody should sign up for this $50 a year Life Med Insurance, takes care of the one problem that you mentioned. And our system, our emergency services system is steeped in volunteerism, and I think we're lacking there. And if the volunteer system isn't working, as is mandated by state law, I believe, in a second-class city, that we are essentially a volunteer-driven community or municipality. Anyway, I found this very distressing, that emergency services need to be available for the locals 12 months a year. And I will be talking about this down the road, going into wintertime. It's a critical service, and it is a seminal service.
Yeah, agreed, Peter. Chief Valentine starts on the 26th?
Full-time, round the year, not seasonal, full-time.
Yeah, and I understand one of his main priorities will be to establish a more robust volunteer base when he gets here.
That's correct. Also, even with Chief Valentine being hired, we also have a second position that's open, the fire captain, which part of those, criteria for that is has to be a current advanced or EMS certified. So with that, if we have three full-time permanent positions here, you will be able to have, as long as we maintain those positions, full-time paid staff that covers, and the volunteers will help support that paid staff. So that's the biggest thing, that's the biggest thing we have to offer right now, especially if we hire that third position. That way, the volunteers and the police side will still be available if needed, if we only have one paid staff to still drive the ambulance as we've done in the past. That's not going to be an issue, since we have 24/7 coverage on law enforcement.
Great. Thanks, Andre. Victor, you had a question?
Yeah. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a special quick presentation?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Corby, would you please approach the dais, please?
Oh, Scott.
So on behalf of Heather, who was an intern in Senator Murkowski's office last year, he provided guide service in the stormy rain, he was the only one that volunteered. So he pointed, I'm guessing he pointed and off they went, and he was there when they came back, and for rescuing the notables and honorables that were on, you know, the buses.
Yeah.
This is...
There you go.
Are we ready?
Yes.
This gift is for you. If you'd like to open it now, it would be greatly appreciated.
I have no idea what this is.
It's not spam.
Oh, wow.
Something from the...
From Washington DC, huh?
Yeah, US Congress, change jar.
Very nice. Good job, Scott. Next item on the agenda, ordinances for introduction, ordinance 2023-03, an ordinance repealing Article III of the Whittier Municipal Code, Chapter 3.36, entitled Lease of City Lands, and enacting Chapter 3.38, entitled Lease of City Lands, to require a lease allocation plan that applies to leases and subleases with a city, and codifying leasing and subleasing procedures imposed by the city. Holly Wells, our city attorney, would like to state something here.
Thank you, mayor. Before you delve into this ordinance, I just wanted to give council a heads-up on what we were hoping to accomplish with the work group, working group on this ordinance. This is presented to council for introduction, more to provide councils much time as possible to digest the information contained in the ordinance. So for that reason, the hope is to, or the purpose is to recommend postponement of introduction until the next meeting, while keeping the ordinance before council. This way, council has time to digest it at the next meeting. If that approach is taken by council, we will prepare a PowerPoint presentation, as well as some user-friendly documents that help everybody understand the type of system and land allocation plan process that this ordinance and the working group is bringing forward to council, because there's a lot of information here, there's a lot of policy issues. One of the things, too, that we hope to have at that meeting is the finance director's work to identify policy issues, as has your assistant city manager and your other directors. So we want to bring those policy issues to you. A lot of the discussion that the working group had on those policy issues, I think, not to speak for the mayor and council member Pincush, but I really think they got to a place where they felt that it was best to get councils as a body, council's thoughts on some of those more nuanced sections. So for that reason, we are really trying to lead with time here for you, and then, but stay within the process of the ordinance with introductions, and then once you decide to introduce with public hearing, and kind of keep, excuse me, keep everything surrounding that structure. So to the extent that's helpful.
So what you're saying, this is an introduction to the introduction?
This is an introduction to the introduction, and it might be another introduction to an introduction next time. You know, we just want to give you the space to talk about this.
But basically, just a formal presentation, so that gives us a chance to take a look at it and digest a little bit before we formally introduce this for public hearing. Real good.
That is...
All right, so no further action needed to be taken right now on it, is that correct? Okay.
The only thing you would... The only thing you would need is a motion to postpone to a date certain, so we don't accidentally kill the ordinance. And so you want to postpone to the next meeting.
To the July 18th.
July 18th meeting.
And so basically, that would change, I mean, this says introduction date as of today, and then it has the public and enactment, public hearing and enactment as July 18th. So what we're asking is that you postpone this introduction to the July 18th meeting.
Understood.
Let the community and you, those council members, process.
Understood. Peter, you had a question?
Yeah, well, when this is officially introduced, would it be possible to see the article that is being repealed to be able to note the divergences?
Yes, the repeal is a chapter, not an entire article. So that's really going to be helpful, too, so you can see the context. But also, what we're hoping to bring you is not just the red line strikeout, which will be, which you will have, but you'll also have a PowerPoint presentation that breaks down the sections and actually explains what's happening here. The other piece is a sort of very user-friendly land allocation plan, step by step, how are we actually doing this? You know, what you're, what you have here is a way for council to control what their land allocation plan is each year. And then that sort of sets the stage, which then, which sets what lands are available for lease, what, how leases are handled for those properties coming up. And so we'll walk through that entire process. But it also engages in, okay, what happens when a person wants to assign a lease, what happens when a person wants to sublease, what happens with provisions, we want a template, is in here, you know, so council's saying, we're going to have a template, it's going to be subject to council approval, there's all of this. So as you can hear, I mean, I'm just spewing off some components, but there's a lot to meet here, and it's going to require some time.
Yeah, this is a good example for me of, you know, how this process works, how a work group can get together, work together with administration and with our council, and go through that process, give us a chance to kind of tear it apart, take a look at it from, you know, the council's perspective, from the community's perspective, and try to create something that we can present to the community for further, for further use. But at least it kind of gives our council a much better idea of what, you know, what's in our minds and what's, what our priorities are. So I think it's a good, a really good example of how that works and a good example of how much time it's actually going to take, because it's, it's going to take a lot of time. Okay, so can we get a motion to postpone this to the July 18th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to postpone introduction to the July 18th meeting, Arneson made the motion seconded by Blair. If there's no discussion, I can go ahead and do vote.
Yeah.
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, it's kind of not really directed to vote, but two things to reiterate, one is reiterate is people, we need to let people know, this does not affect existing leases, this is for future leases.
Good point.
And number two, with council, when you're reading this, you have to kind of understand the definitions in order to understand the comments, because if you read, or the other section, if you read one section without knowing the definition, you can get confused on what it's saying, because it's, it doesn't, every section doesn't clarify itself, you have to kind of understand other parts to understand it. It's a big piece of work, and it, I think it's coming together very well, but it is, you can't just read it one time and get it right. It just won't work.
Yeah, you know, you have to put everything into context. And yeah, I have to thank you, Dave, you put a lot, a lot of work into that, and I really appreciate that, the effort you put into it. Okay.
Moving forward on voting to postpone the introduction to the July 18th regular council meeting, Arneson?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Pincush?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Denmark?
Yes.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That postponement is approved.
Okay, real good. Next item, resolutions, resolution 2023-019, a resolution approving repairs to sea float resulting from an electrical fire caused by wear and tear damage to electrical wires in a amount not to exceed $78,000 in appropriating funds.
I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Go ahead, Peter.
Why are, why not we holding the boat that started the fire responsible?
This is, yeah, this is an electrical fire that happened in the transformer that is...
Excuse me, I thought this was the dock.
Yeah.
Pardon me.
Was the dock in what you drove?
Yeah. Any more questions? Any other issues? Okay.
Hearing none. Voting for resolution 2023-019. Blair?
Yes.
Arneson?
Yes.
Pincush?
Yes.
Denmark?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That resolution is passed and approved.
Real good. Next item is discussion on the Whittier Food Bank. We have, there was a letter that was included in the packet, and also Pastor Al Diles here, maybe you want to come to the podium and ask, maybe give us kind of a presentation of what you're up against?
I'll need you to relax the rules to allow, have a vote to relax the rules to allow mister, because it's a discussion item, so you have to give him, everybody has to give him approval.
Okay. Do we want to discuss it first, or do you want to go ahead and let Pastor explain the issues to us?
I'll make a motion to relax the rules.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead, Pastor. Do we need to?
No, I just need that.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you very much. City leadership, I appreciate the opportunity. I was here about seven months ago, sort of presenting the same issue. We did not at that time have any place to operate a functioning food bank that meets the standards of the Alaska Food Bank, which provides us food. Since then, we've increased the number of recipients, those people that benefited from the food bank, and the state of Alaska is still well behind the power curve in approving SNAP benefits for people that need them. So far behind the power curve that, I don't think any people at the food bank have no idea when that resolution's going to be solved. Right now, we're servicing 38 units. Now, some of those units are one box per family, some of the larger families get two units, but we serve 38 units, and we believe it's probably less than half of those units that we could serve here in Whittier. But we're asking for the, and I said that in the letter, the single most valuable item in all of Whittier, and that's a space, a place to operate out of, that we can keep clean, that we can have a freezer, that we can have refrigeration, that we can have shelves so that people can come and shop, or those that can't come, we can provide for them. We are encouraging everyone to check on their SNAP benefits, to keep pushing that. We haven't seen, I think we've had one or two this month, excuse me, last month, that were approved for benefits, and we've got probably 50 or 60 folks waiting for their SNAP benefits to be approved. Right now, we have a lot of families that are challenged in their needs for their children and their own needs. And we've been operating the food bank on the west dock of the BTI. The less you handle food, the safer it is. You haul it up to our church's condominium, you break it all down, you put it all together, you put it back together, you do all those things, you've actually created a health hazard instead of a health solution. What we're doing on the dock is putting all the dry goods on the dock, we're keeping the frozen goods frozen and keeping them individually wrapped and put together. But it's not the right place to have a food bank.
So you're having to distribute, you have no place to store it, no secure place to store it, and so you're having to distribute it right away?
No secure place for refrigeration or anything like that. There have been, there have been many hands try to find it, a place for us. In the letter, we took a, we came up to bat and took a swing at a space on the 15th floor that the city owns that's been vacant for two years. We were going to go in and renovate it at our cost, fix it up, put shelving in, put refrigeration in, and all the items. I suspect that that's not a popular solution to the problem, just for a lot of reasons, although that is a commercial floor in the BTI. Our problem is that we're, we can no longer tether ourselves to Girdwood because their needs are increasing exponentially also. We can't go directly to the food bank because we don't have a location. So we're sort of at an impasse of whether we're going to have a food bank and a social service in Whittier, or we're not. And that's all up to you, you guys.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, I, right, 15% of our population, maybe as much as 30 qualify for this type of assistance, so it's substantial. I think that, you know, any operating community, you know, needs to provide a way, you know, to help support those that are less fortunate. I know the reason that you're here is because that, that was offered as a potential solution, the 15th floor.
Yeah.
And, and that's why you're here in front of council.
We've had, this is the fourth or fifth potential solution.
Right, right. So whether or not that's the right solution or not, it's, it's up to us to think about it and to maybe determine. It's a, it's a one-bedroom, right? It's, it's something that's maybe not suitable for a family anyway.
But it's not suitable for anyone right now.
Yeah, right. It does, it does need to be renovated for anyone to, to, to use that as a residence. So, so, you know, that's the reason for it being considered as a potential benefit to our community. It's also something that could be possibly used in conjunction with, you know, I know Girdwood Clinic will often come over and provide health fairs or clinics over here, and this, that's also, that also includes mental health services, and we don't really have a good place to conduct that type of operation here. That I see as a potential use for that in addition to the, it being a food bank. Also, what you're saying is that the church, it will operate the food bank, even help with maintaining the, you also provide transportation to get the food. The problem is really just the space and, you know, providing that space. And you're wondering if the, if the council or the community is willing to use that to support that for the food bank.
As I understand it, the city owns that property.
Right, right. So it's, it's not being used for anything else right now. So we could consider it being used on a temporary basis.
Mayor, can I toss something out?
Sure.
I don't want to be the bearer of bad news to anybody listening, because I fully endorse this. Jackie and I have worked with food banks, and he shall provide, you know, for years and years. This will be a council decision, but our hands are tied for the, the best and highest use for that facility.
Sure.
And...
So that's the process.
There's the conundrum.
Sure, understood.
Well, I don't think that you need the best and highest use. I mean, I think you can choose to, there are, there are certain areas where you can do a under fair market value for, you know, community, best interest of the community. But still, I do think this is actually a quasi-judicial component, because as, that you have a policy basis, and that may come into play when you're determining the permit, it's not, I think what needs to happen is you need to bring this back, and like, it needs to be processed on an administrative front, and then determined if you can have a permit, and if the, if you have, what interest is at stake, and if that interest is a permit, or is that a lease, you know, and sort of go through those steps. So I, you know, in that, in that regard.
And HOA, and we're, we're also, you know, considering, you know, housing for a new fire chief and family. There's...
But I don't think we should do any of that.
No, not tonight. There's a lot to talk about.
Right, because we need to get it on me.
Yeah, but it is something that...
But it does sound like...
It's just something that's been, I think, Pastor, you've been here, you know, since Sep, was it September of?
Eight, yeah, we've been here eight months.
Eight months now. So it's something that's been worked on for the last eight months, and we still have not come up with a solution yet. So we're trying to get, you know, cross that bridge, you know, either make a decision whether or not that unit could be used, and if not, then go to the community to come up with some better ideas for a secure place in BTI or one of the other units that's available around Whittier, so that we can provide this service to our community. Because I agree, I think it's something that's critical. Tom, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Hang on a second. Yeah, hang on a second, Henri. Tom Wagner's going to go first.
So I just want to say there are three other options in the BTI.
Okay.
We've talked about two of them, but I need a little participation from you to move forward with them, and we can make this work. And if the 15th floor, if that condo is an option, I could possibly make it a better option. I can tell you right now, I'm going to have to put on my other hat here, but I really don't want strangers going up to the 15th floor. I'm already having an issue in the building with...
I don't want that either, council.
So I would rather, if, if the 15th floor was a possibility, I would rather use that as storage, and then I could give you another place on the first floor.
Councilmember Wagner?
So.
Could you, could you just identify for the record that you're speaking as, because that, because the minutes are going to show that it looks like a council member has three units available. And I know that you have another hat you're wearing, so just...
Yes, I'm speaking as the operations director for the baggage towers.
Okay.
And we have talked about this.
And so I do think it would be most appropriate just to recognize how much, you know, how interested council is in supporting, but avoid too much back and forth on the details surrounding the, the location. And I, but I do understand where council's going, and I'm sorry to be the messenger, but I think we should, but that does not mean that there isn't an avenue here to bring forward something that's an actionable instrument or memo that gets council where it's trying to go, or not trying to go, depending on how it comes up.
What we've learned here is that to, for the 15th floor, there's going to be a process that it has to go through, and that's going to take a little bit of time. And what Councilman Wagner, or building manager Wagner, is stating is that there may be three other options that are a little bit quicker, and we might want to explore those first, and it would just take, maybe, would it take a presentation to the board of directors at baggage towers, or what would that look like?
Yeah, tomorrow night would be a good time to come up.
I'm concerned about sanitation issues, and that's the problem with the basement. Well, they will talk, that's not for here anyway, but...
Yeah, that's not, yeah, we'll talk about it later. That's not one of the options.
Okay, sounds like we got a little bit of a path forward, and if that doesn't turn out right, then we'll have a work session with council and come up with maybe an option for 15th floor. But hopefully, we can do something a little bit quicker through the board of directors at BTI.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, no, thank you, everyone. Next item, scheduling the city policy.
Oh, sorry, it's, it's easy to forget the people on the phone. I'm really sorry, Henri, go ahead. First of all, I'd like to interject my thinking on this. I'm 125 miles away, but I know that Charlene and I have donated several hundred dollars worth of food and almost a pick-up load of clothing and a lot of other things. And I think in my own mind that I think we better, personally, I feel that we should keep the apartment up on the 15th floor. I'm not in favor... I'm, I'm not in favor of, by no means of leasing that out or whatever the case may be here in regard to the, you know, the pantry, give over, you know, and so forth or whatever. I think there's room in the church itself with a little bit of ingenuity and so forth. So I think
I think they've looked at that. They, they did that. Yeah, understood, Arnie. They've looked at that. There's just no way to make that secure down in, in that, in the church. So that's, that's one of the issues is finding a secure place that's big enough to be able to store the, the food and the refrigeration equipment needed for the food pantry. But yes, I, I, we understand your point that you're not really in favor of the fifteenth floor. So hopefully we can work something out otherwise. Dave, did you have any comment on that?
Uh, yeah, just, just that I support helping in some way, even if it would be financially for them to secure another place versus that one, rather than getting into the, the issues of the leases and all that stuff. But if they, if they find another option, but they need financial assistance to get it, a one-time thing to get it going, that I would probably, depending on what it is, I would probably be in support of
Yeah.
some city municipal assistance to get this thing work, workable.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, good. Thank you very much. Okay, oh, Victor, yes, go ahead.
I would, I'm in support of, you know, if there's some way we can help meet this need in Whittier. I'm not in support of using an apartment that could be used for housing for this already, not to mention as well as other HOA issues. Might, we might encounter that we have to navigate if we're to do that, go that, down that avenue. Using like some sort of non, non-housing residential space. If there's way we could help.
Yep, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, scheduling the city council policy and procedure manual committee meeting. Do we, I, we talked about Dan and myself being on that. And should we like maybe present a doodle poll so we can take a look at our calendars or did you have a better idea?
So the reason that we've asked for this to be brought back forward is at the last council meeting and the council meeting before that, you as a council did designate Mr. Blair and yourself, Mr. Dickinson, as the council portion of that committee meeting. But unfortunately, we sent out multiple doodle polls. And when we went to schedule the meeting, there was some conflict back and forth. And so we as administration want to help in every way possible, but we need your help to help us schedule your meetings. So I figure if I've got you right here and you guys can look at your calendar, we can make what we need to work on our side. We just want to make sure that we have you committee members in attendance.
So I can do any Monday or any Tu, any Tuesday. And then this coming Wednesday. So the June twenty-eighth would be the Wednesday that I could, I could work. And then using that as a pattern, that Wednesday and skip another, you know, it's every other Wednesday. So there's three nights that I can do.
Nights or days?
From four o'clock on.
You looking for Wednesdays?
Yeah. So we're saying the twenty-eighth, I'm available on the twenty-eighth.
So can we schedule a committee, proceed, a policy, council policy and procedure manual committee meeting for June twenty-eighth from four to five PM to start out? And then if we need to do that every other week? Mr. Blair? Mr. Dickinson?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm putting it in the notes and the minutes that we have scheduled that for June twenty-eighth. And that will be in the council or the conference room here in City Hall.
Okay, real good.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes, go ahead, Peter.
This exercise was done three or four years ago and a manual was presented to council by our current legal team. So whatever you guys are doing, you might want to do this through the lens of that, whatever problems may or may not have existed with the original plan.
And through the mayor to council member Denmark, or Denmark through the mayor. We, that is what we're working off of. That draft has been given and provided to the committee itself. And our goal was to start that review from that actual already made document for us.
Right, next item is scheduling the city attorney review. This is something that I haven't been a part of before, a city attorney review. So so I guess we're looking for some guidance on how we want to do that, who's in charge of that, how does that work?
Well, I can talk to you about what other communities have done. We, I, truthfully, a lot of our communities don't do formal reviews, but they do, you know, they do sort of project-based reviews, you know, so, but I do know that Seward has a, it's a more formal attorney evaluation process. And when we worked with them, if I remember correctly, we would do a review that was both, both public and then also there was a private component that was to talk about project-specific that have an attorney-client privileged component. And less about, so one thing I will say is unless you're going to talk about some crime of moral turpitude or something regarding our reputation and character that's on a personal front as your legal counsel, our ethics and our performance and our responsiveness and all of those things that council cares about and will be, those are, those are matters of public concern. Even if that's uncomfortable for us, it should be done in public, not behind closed doors. So for that reason, the executive session part is to protect you and it would be project-specific. So I don't know if you want to, I think in Seward, it was always done as a single evaluation on a single day, you know, and, and then there were, there were written forms that the council members filled out. And if you remember differently, tell me. I feel like there were forms that the council members filled out. So we probably get a copy and template of those forms. And then they were gathered and shared with the attorney. Those forms were not confidential at the end of the day. There has been some debate in various communities on whether that they could be confidential. So those records, when you take one, you know, take that record and it goes from one council member to another council member to the mayor and are, those are not confidential under the attorney-client privilege. And I do not think there's a reason to keep them from disclosure by, under the public records act. So it's just important to know that going into the procedure, what you write will be disclosed. And, but you can also share those comments publicly. So, or you could have a grading system. I've seen that. So we could give you what we have. I mean, what we can find as far as sort of the report card approach, the essay approach, the
Yeah.
informal approach. That's all I got for you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understood. I mean, I think, I think what I'm looking for, if anything, is just a, a good discussion. I don't think we need too much of a, you know, grading system or something like that because unless there's, it's tied to something specific, you know, like a bonus or, or something tangible, there's no reason for it, right? I think it's just a matter of being able to express either our pleasure or displeasure with, you know, performance or following priorities. Or it's an opportunity to get together and find out how we're holding you up, right? I think I, I want to be able to, I understand that government is messy and we often, I, I, and I've heard you express some frustration sometimes with not being able to get your work done because there are so many obstacles in your way. And we don't understand that as a council. We're on the outside looking in. We are volunteer-based. And maybe we can help, maybe. So I, I, that's what I would like to see is some sort of discussion process that we can go through and, and talk about those things without getting too messy. I don't know about anybody else. Peter, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
I don't disagree with any of that. I was going to offer a tangential question.
Go ahead.
Just in the city manager's report, we're at sixty percent of our budget on legal fees here in June. Is that anomalous at this time of the year?
I don't know. I would think we would have to go back and look at the budget. I would, I would direct that at finance.
A finance director might be able to answer that, yeah.
Councilmember Denmark through the mayor. You know, I think if I remember correctly, you were the council member, not in this current year's budget, but in the prior year, who suggested that we increase the budget to specifically address councils, you know, repeated requests to update the city code. And we just hadn't really, we'd had a lot of staffing turnover. So I think we just really haven't been able to focus on that. Obviously, we're kind of now in a, in a new phase and everybody's rolling in the same direction, trying to get the code updated. And that does require a lot of attorney time. So I think the bulk of the attorney efforts on our behalf have been related to some lease challenges we've had. And then this effort to try to, you know, work with council committees to try to address certain sections of the code as well as the staff. We're reaching out to them on a lot of these issues. Not just the code, also lease-related issues. So I think that is why we're over budget. And I expect we will end the year considerably over budget. But we are also going to work to try to cut costs in other areas so that we can, you know, make the budget whole, so.
Thank you.
And through the mayor? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Wagner, there's also the, the other facet, which is the head of the bay, defining the parameters. You know, everything is going on there. That's the other facet.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we want to schedule?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. A recommendation?
Yeah.
I have a friend in the community where three of us at least up here used to work.
Yeah.
And I could get possibly their boilerplate or template for what was being used and, and get that to you.
Sure.
And, and to the firm so they can take a look.
Yeah, so maybe present that to us at the next council meeting.
How's that?
On July eighteenth.
Does that work?
Okay, sound good to everyone else? Looks good. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, after that, it's informational items and reports. Anything that anybody wants to add to that? Victor, you want to add anything to Parks and Rec? That's all in the report, okay.
All in the minutes there.
Real good. Next item is council comments. I'll, I'll start with a few items. One is the RV waste dump. I think at one time we had asked for a proposal of maybe a couple of different options, at least for an RV waste dump. Here we're into the, into the tourist season, but we don't, not only do we have tourists here, but we have people that are living in the, and working here at the harbor, but living in the RV lot. And they don't really have any place to dump. And we're wondering if, if there's any ideas for that. If you can help us out with that, Scott, I'd appreciate, appreciate that.
Good evening, council. Several options have been looked at. You know, one of the options was do nothing. One of the options was to install it down in the harbor. That was a no. We talked about installing a tank and sucking it out up at the head of the bay. I'm just waiting for, this is where we want to go. And you guys, the estimated run of that is thirty thousand dollars. And to give blessing to Chris to find the money for it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think if we're going to invite people into our community with our RVs and if we're going to have people, we have a housing problem. So that then invites people to find alternate ways of, of living here and working here. And, and I know that some of them are living in their RVs. And if we don't provide a place for them to dump their waste, then it could end up in the creek, which is what we saw last year, and we don't want that to happen. You know what I mean? We want to be able to do, I think we need to do something. But I guess I'll, I'll leave it up to the rest of the council if they feel as friendly about that as I do.
So I will remind council that the National Forest Service across the way does not provide dumping services. There's tremendous amounts of RV parks that do not provide it. Also remind council that there isn't living in motorhomes out of a designated area is not permitted in what are your municipal code. I have no problem installing that. It's not a mandate. It is a, a direction.
Understood. Yeah, Peter.
Yeah, so we do have a housing shortage. There are a number of people living on RVs contrary to ordinance, and I understand the need to do so and I support it. But as you said, the Forest Service doesn't supply it. We are, a population density here is very high. One RV dumps in a creek and it'll impact a percentage of our population here, unlike you might over in lord knows where. So to reiterate what the mayor said, we should do something.
Okay. Dave Pinker, you're on the phone there. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, just very simply, I support what you're saying, Mayor. We, it's just a basic service and the tunnel kind of exacerbates the need to do it. If, you know, if they could drive to Girdwood without a tunnel, it would be one thing or, you know, somewhere. But it is, it is needed and it's specifically with the housing crunch, it's just a, we, we've got to, it's, we, we've got to do something to accommodate it.
Great, thanks. Arnie, you had a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead, Arnie.
Okay, yes, I, I have to agree a hundred percent because most of the RVs, you know, they hold, they have approximately about a twenty to twenty-five gallon holding tank. And they have to get rid of that someplace. And one of the nicest dumps that I've come across is up on the way to Fairbanks is at Anderson. And it is absolutely, and I think we should have maybe the city clerk or city manager or whatever to go out and take a picture of it and send it down here to Whittier so we can copy it. It, it's unique. It's the only way I can, and I've been all over the United States in, in the motorhome. And that at Anderson is by far the best.
Great, thanks, Arnie. Any other council members have any comments? Yeah, go ahead, Victor.
Is like this mobile, I guess, off-grid RV dump station does require water as well?
Yes.
To expand a little bit on the plan that was presented to the city manager, digging in a thousand, fifteen-hundred gallon poly tank up at the head of the bay in a low hanging area in the ditch outside of the campground. With that being said, we'll have to create surface drainage to drain into that tank. So when they drain their hose and they sit on the pad and they leak poop, it gets washed into the tank. Then we have to provide water, non-podable water out there from them to brush off. So it's going to be buying a tank, it's going to be buying two sets of batteries to support a pump system on a trailer to haul the potable water as well as the excavation in the tank. And then we're fortunate enough to have the concrete company in here this year to pour concrete slab and other accessories for covering, covering the hole, so. There is no electricity out there and it's light twenty hours a day, not eighteen hours a day.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Scott, I'm sorry. I know we've talked about this before and I cannot remember your answer. But a long time ago, there was a plan or at least a conversation about putting one in across from the railroad section. There's partially, there's water there, there's already pad, there's a drain. I know it's not what it needs to be, but it could be modified or, I don't know.
So a couple of issues that go on there. So taking vehicles up Blackstone and around Hill Street to get them to pull in correctly into it. They will not be able to swing on that. The other thing is, is we have people that are using the pad out there for boat storage or using storage, or using that facility, and getting fifth wheels and motorhomes to turn around in a tight area. So the simplest solution would be stick it up there. Not to mention, we don't we don't have plumbing to where we can tie in easily out there. It's actually be cheaper to buy a tank and bury a tank.
Go ahead, Peter.
We have some long-term planning for development of a city park up at the end of Glacier Avenue, right? Rather expansive park, which will be contiguous to the existing creekside campground as well. That may not be a solution for this year, but down the road, should that maybe tied into that idea.
Yeah, thank you.
That was looked at and planned on being included in that up there, because there will be some motorhome or large vehicle parking.
Good. Okay, so I guess.
The short-term effects that we're whatever happens here is not in perpetuity.
Could we, I mean, come up with a short-term pump out that we could use this year?
Yeah, we we can get this constructed this year.
Okay. All right. And then, Chris, I guess I will need your help to find the funding for that. But I think it's a necessary function that we need to provide. Okay, thank you. Scott, before you you leave, speaking of the park up the end of Glacier Avenue, I'm hoping to get support to have you take that Jersey barrier that's up there out of that one that one area. I'm not sure if we if you had a need for that someplace, or if you have a need for that. But if we could remove that from that area, and the and block off that property, just with the rocks that are up there, that it will, you know, parking can, there's plenty of room for parking on the road beside, but then that'll create some open space. And we can start to create kind of a little trail system in there around the perimeter and build possibly a, you know, see what the community wants to do, but we can do some other things inside. We want a place to put our park benches that we've had donated. And I think that's just a, just the beginning, to start to show people that we are starting to create that park up there that we've already come up with a thirty-five percent plan with.
I I will move the Jersey barrier there many of this week. So you could have just called me, we could have got it done that quick.
Yeah, no, I was just something that I wanted to bring up. Thank you very much. The only thing I had was I noticed in the packet, not for you, sorry, the in the in the packet, there was a note about the grant application for the transportation and pedestrian safety action plan, Chris, something that we didn't talk about. And I'm not sure if anyone else saw that in the packet, but I thought that that was a good thing to maybe if you can give us a presentation, you've got some more information about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are working to, you know, to identify different pots of money that the city can apply for in terms of grant funding. And one of the things that specifically we've been looking for is transportation money for the roads in Whittier, Shotgun Cove Road, and any improvements that we can make to road safety and pedestrian safety.
Including the area up there where the rail crossing is up there towards the for the head of the bay project?
Yes, yeah, definitely. That that would be one component. So one of the things that we have identified is certain pots of DOT money that have to do with roadways require a safety action plan that is related to identifying and mitigating deaths, you know, highway deaths, pedestrian and vehicle interactions. And because Whittier has some really unique issues with pedestrians, vehicles, and the train, I think that, you know, we have some more complex issues than some larger communities would have. But we don't have a safety action plan. So one of the things that we're working on right now is a grant application that would develop a safety action plan for Whittier that would focus on identifying the areas in town where we have those pinch points where pedestrians and vehicles are most likely to have interactions. You know, one would be the rail crossing, one would be the head of the bay rail crossing, the harbor. You know, we don't have sidewalks in real conspicuous places. The road kind of jogs in a couple of different locations in town. We have a very long and but very active road that is not paved. You know, on Shotgun Cove Road, we're going to have more traffic going out there and, you know, competition between our pedestrians. And so anyway, we're seeking money to to try to get a safety action plan in place that would identify strategies for mitigating those challenges and making it safer for pedestrians in Whittier. So keep our fingers crossed. See if we can get the funding, and we'll let we'll let you know.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Yeah. What's the timeframe on it? Do you have any idea?
The grant application is due mid-July. So we don't have a lot of time, but we've been working on it. And we've, you know, we're we're almost ready to get the application submitted.
Sounds good. And then it'll be it'll be awarded then shortly after that.
Yeah, I'm not actually sure the award date, to be honest with you. That slipped my mind. But yeah, we'll we'll keep council appraised.
All right. Well, good luck. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's it for me. Peter, have you got anything?
Just, you know, one more question as a function of the city manager's report. As I noticed with my last question, our travel and training expenses already exceed over two hundred percent of the annual budget with AML still to come this year, which used to be the main expense in that category. And rather than an explanation of what we where it went, which I do believe I know, was this not anticipatable when we put together the budget?
Is that a Chris question, I guess?
Councilmember Denmark through the mayor. Travel and training is always one of those areas that gets a lot of scrutiny, as it should. I think we do have new employees that really need to get up to speed and certified. So I do think that that is going to be going forward, the bulk of those costs is folks that require certification. But yes, the costs were anticipated. And I'll tell you, I'll just say that, you know, I'm really tough on department heads when they're asking for money for travel and training. And it's because the taxpayers want to make sure that if we're going somewhere, that it's, you know, a really good use of money. And so, you know, usually what I try to do to keep travel and training costs down is to shoot low. And if they want to expend more money on travel and training, they have to be willing to give up something to do that. So I think that's kind of where we find ourselves is the administration knows that, you know, we have to find cost savings somewhere else to make up those those costs. We could have put it in the budget, but I think that during the process of the budget, we were looking for areas to cut so that we could balance the budget. So I guess my commitment to you is it's our job to balance the budget and give you back a balanced budget because that's what you approved. And so that's, I guess, I'm not the one to speak to actually what travel and training has happened necessarily, because I'm not fully aware. But I do know that we have some folks that are that need to be certified as part of their job description. And so that is being pursued.
And why do we lump travel and training together? They seem to be too.
Yeah, that's.
Notions.
It's a it's a good question, but I've never seen anybody separate them. That doesn't mean nobody does separate them. But it's often they go hand in hand. You know, you're traveling to go to training, not necessarily always. And I would say that, you know, as we move more into the technological area that, you know, more and more, you can you can do training without travel. So it's a good point.
That we are really striving to do online, you know, at home courses. We're really working on that.
Well, then can I bring a tangential thought to that comment?
That I'm not going to Fairbanks to.
No, no, it's about online attendance at the meetings. Sorry, I missed the workshop. But if we can do our training online, for the love of God, you know, we got these guys on the phone, which is marginally effective. I understand the issues that have been ongoing for way too long. Somewhere along the line, you just got to cut the cord and start again and find a solution.
Yeah, let's say, let's get our code updated so that we can get that done.
It's not so much a code problem as a hardware problem, is my understanding going forward.
Yeah.
And tonight is a prime example of the first twenty-five minutes of the meeting. We have no sound. We have video. We have no sound. And the telephone kept cutting us out. So right now, currently, I just want to say currently, we have our clerk, who's at another state for training, manning this computer because we've had issues within this building. So.
It's a hardware problem.
And it's a continuous, we're trying. I mean, she's done really amazing things, but we're getting there, I promise. It's just.
Well, and I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's like leaps and bounds versus what we've had before. We're just, it takes time.
Does not our problem lie with Alaska, Alaska Communication Systems?
It's the computer system. It's the communication system. It's the the actual networking system. So I would say, right now, out of the five components, only two of them, maybe one and a half of them are actually working the way they should be.
And to what degree is that from our service provider?
It would be, I mean, I'll just say that right now, we're working with our service provider to do a mapping of the communication in the entire building, because when this building was built, nothing was mapped out. And even to get that fixed, we're trying to, we're working with them, and that comes at a cost also. For them to come into town comes at a cost.
I I understand that. And we've been talking about this for over a year, and it's been the same problem over and over again. The policy issues surrounding electronic attendance are a different issue here, but that we're still fighting hardware issues after a year. I don't, it's, we need to do something to fix it.
Yeah.
I mean, change providers.
I will write an RFP to do that.
There was nobody else until recently. There is going to be somebody else, but it hasn't been announced yet.
Well, I've had to get creative down at my shops. There are options here. And I'd be happy to, anyway, I'm not the guy to talk to about tech stuff, but I know I know that there's options.
Thanks, Peter. Dan, have you got anything, Dan? Tom, how about you? And Victor?
No.
Dave Pincush, have you got anything for council comments?
No.
And Arnie, how about you?
No, I'm good.
All right, thank you. Next item is citizen discussion. Those signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak on any subject over which the council has control. Time is limited to five minutes per speaker. Is Jim going to check to see if anyone signed in?
No, no one signs in for this. It's just you.
Okay. All right. Does anybody, any citizen want to? Yes, Chris Rissinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I thought we were going to talk about what was in the packet, the packet about the response to the warfage issue.
Oh, you're right.
So if you don't mind, I'll just take.
Yes.
Real briefly.
Yeah.
So in the packet, pages one oh four to one nineteen, that's a really long section. And I apologize for it being so lengthy. But we had what I think is a really important question that I think the public deserves a response on. And that that is, why did the city council approve certain rates at the DeLong Dock for raw fish? And and those rates were not implemented by the city. And one of the council members asked us to go back and research what happened and why. So a good question. It was not easy to research. A lot of the things in the past, you know, I had to go back and listen to council meetings to try to figure out who said what. And and some of the documentation that was stored in legislative history, the support documents that are were post were attached to resolutions didn't seem to match with the discussion council was having. So there, so all that is is listed in here at kind of ad nauseam. But the short story is that what appears to have happened is that back when the city took over the DeLong Dock, that was back in 2018, our fee schedule did not have the DeLong Dock on the fee schedule, obviously. We didn't own it yet. And so there was conversations about how much should the city be charging for DeLong Dock warfage? And I was able to find some email correspondence between the then finance director, the then harbor master, and the then, because none of these people are here anymore, seafood processor, that stated that the future Alaska Railroad, and they owned DeLong Dock previously, the future tariff showed that the railroad was going to be increasing the rate from two cents a pound to three cents and on. And and yet, at the time of the transfer, the railroad was charging two cents a pound. And the city staff, based on this interchange, said they had a conversation with the seafood processor and said the rate was going to remain at two cents a pound. However, council later came in and said, you know, we want to charge three cents a pound. Interestingly, the resolution that went to council, when I look at the support documents, it said four cents a pound. But the council meeting minutes and the council actual audio, council only talked about a three cent per pound rate. Councilmember Blair asked at that time if we could consider a higher rate than than three cents. And that was in order to offset the costs of the cities buying the DeLong Dock. And at the time, Councilmember Denmark, Councilmember Pincush weighed in. They actually, their concerns seemed to be that the timing, you know, we were just entering the season, and they didn't feel like it was fair to increase the rates at the beginning of the season, but they were open to talking about a possible rate change later. So council approved a tariff at three cents. However, when council approved the tariff at three cents, the harbor master, who would have been in charge of implementing it, was not at the meeting. And you didn't have a finance director. And when I spoke with the harbor person, who would have been the person to go into the system and make the change, they weren't even given an updated fee schedule that year from the harbor master. In fact, for two years, there didn't appear to be any rate changes. So I think that is appears to me, based on the timing of when people left, to have been just simply it fell through the cracks. The harbor master was was employed at the time the council made the change. But the at the time that the first bills went out, the harbor master wasn't employed. He had just like left that week, I believe. And so I really do think that it was just the action that the council took did not get passed on to the staff person who would have made the actual change. So the second, so that is the history that I could find. And that's all documented in this response. In addition to that, I we were asked, why didn't it get caught sooner? And that's a really good question. And I really can't answer that, except to tell you how it was caught. That was part of the question we were asked. How was it caught? And when was it caught? So in in 2022, I was reviewing, I was helping the harbor staff to review the calculation of sales tax on some invoices. And it was to do with how you calculate the sales tax cap. Because our tax, we have a tax cap that says only a certain amount of sales is subject to tax, everything over that is not. And so we were talking about, you know, do you aggregate all the sales in one day? Is it every boat has their own sales? Is it once a month? So we were talking about that conversation. I pulled up, asked them to pull up some invoices, looked at them. And it was in the process of showing them how to do the calculations on sales tax, that I noticed that the fee schedule has two columns. Here's what warfage is without tax. Here's what warfage is with tax. The column that said with tax is in was incorrect. So I noticed that. But we don't really use that for calculating anyway. We use the without tax, and then we we apply tax to an invoice. So I wasn't too concerned about it. I didn't think there was an issue at that point. But when I was asked to explain the invoice to people in the business, then I really dove in deep so I could give a better explanation. And that's when I noticed. And that's when I noticed, wait a minute, what they're being charged is not actually what's on the fee schedule. And so, we brought, we noticed that, and right away, we brought forward a resolution to council, pointing out that we had noticed this discrepancy. But we also recommended to council that since the day DeLong Dock has been put in, in place as owned by the city, the rate has only been two cents. And so, we were, and again, we did this right before the season in May, so we recommended that we do not increase the rate, and we keep it at the then current rate that we had been charging since 2018. So, the rate, we came forward to council, and at the time, you know, we didn't have a good explanation of why this happened. I made the assumption that it just happened because someone failed to update the computer system. And that, you know, obviously, that was true, but the question is, why did that happen? And that goes all the way back to the beginning of the city taking over ownership of the DeLong Dock. So, if anybody's interested in more of the gory details, they're all in here, and if you have any specific questions, feel free to schedule some time to come in and talk to me. I'm happy to walk through it, but hopefully, that addresses the issue. It wasn't, I mean, I'm not trying to get us off the hook, but in 2022, the bills that went out the door were correct because start the, we didn't start billing until the season began, you know, started. So, our first bills would have gone out in June, and we had asked council to make, you know, weigh in on what the rate should be in May. So, we, we assessed the correct rates to customers in 2022, they paid the correct rates. And so, our audit reflects that. Our auditors looked, they saw that what we billed was what was in the tariff, so they didn't, they wouldn't have caught that. And in prior years, it just wasn't caught. So, I hope that explanation suffices. You know, we're doing our best to be transparent about it because it's, it's a good question. And, you know, I can only give you the information I can find legislatively, but I think we pin down pretty much every piece of it, so.
Yeah, speaking of the auditors, though, was there an issue with our auditors that put us in jeopardy with some of our potential grant applications?
That's, you know, that's a good question, and I will say that the auditors work for the city council. You know, they don't work for me, they don't work for the administration, they work for, actually, for you. And they're keeping the taxpayers' interests first and foremost, and you are the representatives of the taxpayers. So, anytime a council member has a question, you know, related to the audit or what's being audited, that's, that's appropriate, that council members have an opportunity to ask their questions and, and get answers. Initially, I think that the, initially, I believe that when the question was asked, why did we, well, the question I got asked was, why did the city bill something other than what was in the tariff in 2022? And we didn't do that. We didn't bill something that, other than what was in the tariff in 2022 because we changed the tariff. But had we billed something and the auditors caught it, caught that difference, it could have risen potentially, depending on the magnitude of the error, it could have risen to the level of what the auditors would consider a material error. And they would look then at the internal control systems that the city has in place to say, do, are we lacking controls? Are we, do we not have controls that would catch this type of thing? And those are totally legitimate questions for auditors to ask and, and for you to know as a result of their inquiry. But in this particular year, it wasn't an issue. Now, if, if that ever happens, and the auditors have material findings that result in what they call material weaknesses, they are obligated to report that in the financial report. And, and granting agencies, every agency that we get funds from, we have to send those financial reports to. And so, they are fully aware, you know, aware that you might have a recipient who is, has poor internal controls, and that could jeopardize your ability to get funding. I would say, you know, we have, this administration has fought a lot of that historical turnover, I guess I'm just going to call it turnover, with granting agencies that are like, well, we don't, you know, you're Whittier, we don't know if you have the capacity to manage grants, so we don't know if we want to reward you these grants. And so, we're constantly fighting that battle to demonstrate that we have done this before. You know, we have solid track record and so on. So, anything that brings to question that could potentially be harmful, but if we're not doing our jobs, we should be brought to task on that. But I think, at the end of the day, we were going to get a clean bill of health because we didn't do this incorrectly in 2022, and it wasn't caught in 2020, 18, 19, when the error happened.
Yeah, and there's, there's just probably a better way of doing that instead of going directly to the auditors, right? That puts us into jeopardy.
You know, I, I just think that we could have had a conversation, and that allowed us to do a deeper dive, maybe to, to assuage those concerns. And maybe I would ask in the future that we be given an opportunity to do the research. And then, at the end of the research, if, you know, if there's something untoward, by all means, council members should have that conversation.
Right.
Probably an executive session, would be my recommendation. But anyway, nonetheless, I believe it's, it's a resolved issue, so.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Let's see, I guess we got all of that taken care of, citizen discussion. Now, it's time to go into executive session. If I have a break?
Before you go on break, I need to go through the executive session titles, and then I'll read them, and then you, as council, need to let me know who will be in attendance or asked to stay for those portions. So, the first one is motion to go into executive session. That's just general. So, I do need a motion to go into executive session, and I do need a second, but I will read the reasons for the executive sessions. Executive session A is historical lease findings per Whittier Municipal Code 2.08.040 matters that if immediately disclosed, disclosed would tend to adversely affect the finances of the city per the Whittier Municipal Code 2.08.040. C, to discuss legal matters or receive legal advice from the attorney. And I need to know who you would like to have stay in this portion for this one?
I'd like to get response from, Peter, who do you think?
Well, the city council, so I'm not understanding the essence of the question.
Yeah.
So, in order to go into executive session, the council has the full authority to go into executive session, but I need to know who's being asked to stay in the room and who, and then, once we, you vote to go into executive session, then all the, but those people will be asked to leave, and you will have your five-minute break.
So, really for...
Probably legal counsel would be the obvious first choice. And I don't know if there are any...
Finance for the historical lease findings.
Well done.
And for the section B...
And section B is executive session regarding terms and condition of the city manager contract matters that if immediately disclosed would tend to adversely affect the finances of the city.
And council, one thing I will say is, this section, subsection B here is really the follow-up executive session to the last meeting and the proposal, the offer of terms by the city manager regarding the contract. So, there really is no need for C. I think this is, you know, this is just a contract discussion we got with, regarding terms and conditions with your city attorneys and your city attorney who works on employment matters and worked with the mayor on the terms and conditions of the contract. So, I just want to clarify that as you identify individuals to go into executive session.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
So, for the executive session regarding the terms and conditions of the city manager contract matters that if immediately disclosed would tend to adversely affect the finances, I have the city council, the city legal team, and that is it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's for B. And then, per request and explanation from the city attorney, your C sort of melds into your B, so we can remove it.
And I would say, yes, there's just no C this round, because last round, you were in an evaluation procedure. And so, if you went into executive session, the evaluation procedure, the reason why you did that was to talk about the evaluation and performance of your city manager. Now, we are talking about the terms and conditions of the contract as proposed by your city manager. It's a different process, it's a financial one, primarily a financial one.
Okay, and then we'll have assistant city manager also attend the historical, I should say, A, historical lease findings.
Okay, so going into motion, I need a motion to go into executive session. And executive session A, the city attorney, the legal department, the finance director, and assistant city manager will be staying that one. And then, section B will be the legal counsel and city council. If I can get a motion and a second for moving into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Is that you, Mr. Pincush?
I think that was Dave.
It wasn't me, but I can second it.
Wonderful, thank you. Voting to go into executive session at 9:17, Wagner?
Yes.
Pincush?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
Denmark?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Mayor Dickinson?
Yes.
We're going into executive session with a five-minute break to clear the room, and I will mute the mics now.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make the move into some of the executive session.
Thank you, Arnie. Could I get a second?
Second.
All right. Tom?
Coming out of executive session at 10:58. Motion made by Arnison, seconded by Wagner.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Approved, and motion to adjourn.
Do we need to, do we need to state anything?
No, you can, as long as you don't...
Do we have to go back into regular session?
You are back in regular session, and you are live. And then, as long as you didn't, if you guys did not discuss to have anything brought out, no motions made.
Nope.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Right.
Second.
All right, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Adjournment at 10:59.
Thank you.